Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this evening's meeting of the Livingston County Board of Commissioners. We'll begin the meeting with a moment of prayer from our Commissioner Martin Smith.
Thank you, Your Majesty. Almighty Father, we give you thanks and praise. We ask for your wisdom and guidance and stewardship of this county for this generation and the next. May God be blessed in all his designs and all God's children.
Amen. Thank you, Commissioner. Would Brian Johnkier lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Our Pledge of Allegiance is the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you call the role, please?
Commissioner Helserman.
I hear.
Commissioner Domas.
Here.
Commissioner Sample.
Here.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Here.
Commissioner Dreck.
Here.
Commissioner Deaton.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Fiani.
Here.
And Commissioner Gross.
Here.
A quorum is present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next is the approval of the agenda. The Chair will entertain a motion for approving the agenda.
Motion to approve tonight's agenda. Sample support Deaton.
Been moved and supported. If we approve this evening's agenda, are there any comments or questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Yes, Courtney. How do you spread your wits?
Drink Kevich.
Oh, we have Kevich. I was going to make your wits. Let me come down here. Courtney is being recognized for her outstanding service to the county and her fellow employees. Commissioner.
I don't think I need a microphone. I'm usually loud enough. But I am high on presenting support to Courtney Kevich, and I've got a little speech that I've been given to read, so just bear with me.
Commissioner, I do need you to speak into the microphone because we can hardly hear you on Zoom. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay.
You could stand closer to him if he doesn't bite.
Okay, so Courtney has been employed by Livingston County for six years. She started as a newly, in a newly created part-time temporary position of health promotion specialist, and then made it into a full-time position not long after. In 2021, she was promoted to Health Promotion Coordinator, taking responsibility for the overall management of the health promotion program. In this role, Courtney is responsible for all aspects of the county's health promotion activities, including development of strategies and programs, community outreach, serving on committees with community agencies to ensure the health needs of the public are being met, and develops marketing campaigns for services and programs, participates at speaking engagements, and more. With respect to Courtney's nominations, she received two nominations, one from an employee and one from a community resource, who both capture not only the essence of what Courtney does, but the energy and enthusiasm with which she does it. This is a summary of those nominations, since they were so alike in nature. Courtney works in the Health Department as a Health Promotion Coordinator, Public Information Officer, Accreditation Community Coordinator. It's clear even in her title roles that she wears many hats and fulfills many required duties within the department. Although these roles are part of her position, she routinely exceeds expectations in delivering services within the department and with our external partners. Courtney does not hesitate to step into leadership roles when they are presented. She is a critical member of the department's leadership team and fills a key role in coordinating many department initiatives, including strategic planning, performance management, quality improvement, and community health needs assessment. Courtney has also developed or led development of outreach materials for numerous departmental and human services collaborative body work groups. She has served as co-chair of the Substance Use Disorder Work Group. She has chaired the Community Health Needs Work Group and is a member of the Planning Committee for the county's annual Community Connect event. And she provides oversight of the medical marijuana grant and the prescription for health program and countless other engagements with the Human Services across Livingston County. While this is an impressive situation for a seasoned public health professional, what is more impressive is that Courtney has only been in her current position for two years. Her accomplishments have already made countless positive impacts on Livingston County residents and will only increase in the years to come. Amy Johnston from the Livingston Community Health Mental Health Program also nominated Courtney and took the time to list her many engagements in the community health work area, saying that Courtney sees the value in collaborating with community partners to address community needs. She goes above and beyond to address needs and create or update resources to help those in need. Courtney is great to work with, and Amy says that she is very grateful to have her dedicate her outstanding services to our community. So with that tremendous acknowledgement, I'd like to present you with this Employee Recognition Award. Congratulations.
I just want to thank everyone for this award. It's an honor to serve our community, really. I don't, it's not something that I take lightly, and I am so grateful for all my staff and colleagues around me and the support of the Board of Commissioners. You guys all make it possible. So, thank you.
Good, thank you.
See, I'm really smart. Stay here. I think zero comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is correspondence. We've received correspondence from two communities, well, one community, but two pieces of correspondence from Calcasas County. Chair will entertain a motion. So move to file. Now to receive the file. And support?
Support. Nakagiri.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Next item on the agenda is the call to the public. Each, each person who wishes to address the board will have three minutes to do so. If you start running over, I got to wave this. It's the only thing they get mad at me for is this. Everything else works. Madam Clerk, who do we have?
This evening, we'll start with Steve Livingaway from Howell, followed by Ella Niketan.
Good evening, Steve.
Probably tired of seeing me. As you know, I'm here representing Reaching Higher. And back last December, the board passed a resolution to fund $30,000 for every local school district here for Reaching Higher. You know, school's starting this week, and I brought with me today a Heartland parent and a Heartland student who have experienced what we do in Reaching Higher. So I'll let them share their stories, but let's just say it saves lives. The young man is going to talk today, might not be here, but hadn't been for his experience with Reaching Higher, and I'll let him testify to that. So with school starting, we just, I'm here to beg you to move forward with this funding so that we know what we have to work with, so that we're not canceling programs. Last year, we were very fortunate to get some funding through LES A in the local school districts that allowed us to build, create some new programs where we hadn't had any. We don't have money for those new ones, so they're just going to be gone. And there's going to be students that aren't going to have this chance. I heard in the opening prayer, and I really believe this, I was a principal for 20 years, stewardship of this generation and the next. So I'm not here for me, you know, I'm retired, I'm doing this because I believe in it, but I'm here for these kids. They deserve this chance to be a part of this and many other wonderful things that we offer in our county, but this is something that's important. So I don't know what else I need to do, but I'm asking you, whatever it is, tell me. We need to move forward so that this is there for the kids that deserve this program. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Ella Niketan from Heartland Township, followed by Evan and Dustin Hudgens.
Hi, my name is Ella. I have lived in Heartland Township since 2005, and I repeat that because there are people spreading lies about me and saying that I don't live here. I still live here in Livingston County. And it's unfortunate that I have to say this. Anyways, I am here to talk about the importance of viable alternatives to driving. I have autism. It makes it very difficult to drive. It makes it very stressful. I, it's more difficult than usual to like pay attention. Unfortunately, even though it's difficult for me, I have to drive anyways because there are simply no viable alternatives to driving in this county. Let's exist, and I'm very grateful that it does exist, but you have to book it in advance. Sometimes it's all booked up and you can't use it. And also, you have to know in advance when you're going somewhere where you're coming back. The hours aren't always the most convenient. I think this county really needs to focus on increasing the funding to let's and also to expand service so that more people who either cannot or do not want to drive have viable alternatives to driving. In addition, there need to be many improvements made to the safety of sidewalks. If you've ever seen the sidewalks, for example, along M59, they're very fragmented. A lot of the sidewalks overgrown are overgrown. They stop and end randomly. And here's a funny little fact. I actually was looking through Google Maps Street View, and there used to be a sidewalk that covered the whole span of the area I'm talking about, and now it's fragmented. So I don't know how we've managed to get worse over the last 15 years in terms of the walkability of the county. So my point here is that not everyone can or wants to try, and we need viable alternatives to driving in this county, please. I don't want to hear excuses about how you promised not to raise taxes. This is a public good that benefits everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Evan and Dustin Hudgens from Heartland. I apologize if I mispronounced your last name, followed by Tim Quinn.
Good evening.
You can have a seat.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I am Dustin Hudgens. I am Evan Hudgens' father. Currently work for the state of Michigan, formerly as a Child Services Investigator, currently with the Office of Inspector General. What I'm going to say today regarding Reaching Higher, my son hits me at two levels. One, it's my son. I don't know how many of you are parents or have kids, but also I've seen it on the front line in my former work of what has happened, what can happen to a child that's not, doesn't have an outlet. I don't know exactly the details of the program. I was not in it, but I can only speak to what Evan has gone through and what myself and my wife have seen at home as a result of the program itself. So just to give a little history, Evan has had some medical challenges as a premature birth. Fast forward, had some challenges like a lot of youth with COVID, the loss of family members during COVID. Myself and my wife being on the front line during COVID, having a lot of questions if we were going to come home alive. Evan had a lot of challenges. Then he starts seventh grade. And you know, as a parent, you can only go so far with how much you love your child, how much you care for that kid. Eventually, socialization in a school setting is going to take over. Other kids are going to have an influence on how a kid sees himself, and that's what happened to Evan. First, the bullying, some of the stuff the principal could or could not address. And as it got progressively worse, Evan had to ultimately get checked into a hospital. He tried to end his life, period. I don't know if I can make it any more simple than that. A kid that's never thought of that, never even contemplated that, thought of ending his life. Evan's the most loving, heartwarming kid you'll ever meet. Wouldn't hurt a fly, and here he wants to harm himself, not knowing why. Long story short, he gets out of the hospital and his assistant principal at Orr Creek had introduced this Reaching Higher program. Day one, he doesn't want to go. He wants something to do with it. It's a program. It's something else. You're going to make me speak in public. Well, he's going to sit here today and talk to you. That's what the program, one of the things it's done for him, and his confidence. He wants to share his story because of the things that it's done for him personally. He liked the program so much, after fighting to go into it, he offered to take a second to be a mentor this summer to help others, to influence, to, to show what the program can do. Again, I don't know what they, what they do. I know the basic, the fundamentals of it's a peer-to-peer type group, but I can't tell you, you know, things that, from what Evan went through, from isolation, not wanting to do with the family, to playing board games and coming down and being able to speak to you all today, which was not Evan a few months ago. I don't know a lot of programs in school right now. I don't think any that I can think of that's going to help with leadership, self-confidence, self-esteem. That's what I've seen that this program has done for him. And I can only say testament today, I didn't make him come here today. This is his, this is his journey. This is something that I asked him if he wanted to do, and he wanted to. So I'll just end with what Steve said earlier about, you know, for us, for my wife and I, this was life and death. And it's by happenstance or chance, this little program happened to be in the school at the time for Evan, and we're, we're very blessed that he's with, that he's with us today.
Can I give you 30 seconds to wrap it up, please?
Sure, sure. But I'll, but I'll say this, and I'll turn it over to Evan. We're just very fortunate that he's had a chance to go to this program. And as a parent and as someone with some common sense, I don't understand why there even be an issue of funding. Hopefully today that'll be changed in all your view. I'll turn it over to him.
Thank you.
It, it's whatever you feel like sharing.
You literally explained what I was going to say.
You can just say whatever you would like.
Where do you currently go to school?
Orr Creek, the war school alive.
I'm sorry.
It's true.
What grade are you in?
Eighth grade.
And when you get finished with school, what do you want to be? Got any ideas?
A mentor.
Not a politician. Don't tell me that.
Ohio, a mentor. I want to be one.
I'm sorry, speak up.
I want to be a mentor for Reaching Ohio when I grow up.
Good for you.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions for the gentleman?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
We have Tim Quinn from Genoa Township, followed by Brian Johnkier.
Good evening. My name is Tim Quinn. Excuse me, I'm a precinct delegate for Genoa Township Precinct 1. And it's August 7th meeting. The General Government and the Health and Human Services Committee voted to accept the MDHHS funding to support Livingston County Health Department's response to emerging threats. And before you vote on this issue tonight, I request that you ensure that if these funds are accepted, there's not an adverse impact to county residents in terms of their medical freedom. We all remember during the pandemic, the restrictions and mandates that many of government, excuse me, attempted to implement. We don't want to go down that road again. I'm against any funds being used for contact tracing, for vaccine mandates, basically government mandates of any kind. Excuse me. Very concerned about provisions on page 30 of your packet, and it's the fourth paragraph. You guys all got this. It says, "The final contract," excuse me, "the final contact language will not be available for MDHHS until all the program allocations are approved at the state, typically completed in mid-September, with a deadline to sign the contract October 1st." In past years, this agreement was brought to the board for approval contingent upon no substantial changes in the contract language and final review by legal counsel. I've attached FY23, or Fiscal Year 23 Contract, to provide additional information and do not anticipate any problematic or programmatic, programmatic changes for the Fiscal Year 24. Now, as a committee, you're well aware of how most Livingston County residents feel on the issue of medical freedom. I encourage you to keep this in mind as you make your decision tonight. We feel that more government intervention is not needed. It really creates a problem. People are getting tired of it. Thank you for your time and that you're doing, and what you're doing to preserve our God-given rights as enumerated in our Constitution. Appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Brian Johnkier from Howell, followed by Dale Brewer.
I made it. Thank you. Three minutes, I know. Here tonight, because I wanted to comment on the proposed appointments to the mediation panel in the, in the suit between Livingston County and Heartland Township. We were quite taken aback at the last meeting when we had a member of the Township Board advocating for a member there. Extraordinarily concerning for us. Many of you know Heartland Township, and had I shown up at one of those boards and advocated for a specific person on their mediation panel, I can tell you, it would not have been treated nearly as well. And besides, I didn't, I would think it would be wholly inappropriate for me to make that recommendation. So we have concerns because this follows a pattern of behavior in which there have been inappropriate communications with the township. We, we have a history of that. We have, we have provided many, many files and packets of information for this member that he's requested from us, and almost never does that translate into a question back to us. We find it sometimes seems to end up coming back to us from the township, or it's, it's used to negate some of our arguments. So we have real concerns there. And in, in one instance where we presented a spreadsheet to, that, that was very, that was, that was done to back up our position in terms of the township's initial argument. We asked this gentleman to, to do some analysis of it, and the analysis was done, but what I was told is he didn't want to get in the middle. So anything we've proposed, we've certainly not seen any help with. We also see that in any discussions, the first thing that's brought up when we talk about options is, how can we throttle the station down? What if we shut it down? What if we just allow it to service Livingston County residents? And I would ask you this, if the landfills in Genesee and Oakland and I believe there's one in Washington, decide that they're only going to take waste from their, their respective county that they're situated in, how well does that work for us? Because things just got a lot more expensive. If the wastewater plants outside of our county elect not to provide service for anybody outside of their county, how does that fare for us? Deerfield, Heartland, Tyrone, Green Oak, Hamburg, Unadilla, and Putnam all receive some form of service, at least on the periphery, from, from systems outside of Livingston County. And just to finish up, I discussed this with our attorney. His response is that endorsement last week brings up relevant concerns in this, in this choice, and I just asked that you appoint somebody that that panel be advocates for Livingston County and nobody else, and without an agenda. Thank you.
Dale Brewer, Green Oak Township, followed by Paul Geisner.
Good evening. I'm Dale Brewer from Green Oak Township. I'd like to, first of all, thank the Personnel Committee and Frank Sample for all of his diligent work and going through the recommendations and talking to all of the people that had made comments that they were interested in sitting on the mediation committee. It's certainly not an easy task to make those selections, and again, I commend all of you for what you've done. I would like to take a couple of moments, though, tonight, and I'd like to discuss a couple of things that are, again, in my mind, something that I think you need to each be aware of as you move forward. One of them has been discussed briefly. Again, there was a board member here from Heartland Township at the Personnel Committee meeting that was lobbying for Wes to be on the mediation committee meeting. I guess I have to ask why. I'd like you to just take a second and think, why would someone come and say, "I'd like that particular individual to be on the mediation committee"? Again, knowing the history, I've got to say that I question that he would be able to adequately represent Livingston County based on a number of the situations and communications that we've had to deal with, with Wes and with some of the other things that have happened. So again, we want to make sure that, again, this mediation committee can work properly together and comfortably together to try and come up with a uniform decision that can be hopefully met with Heartland Township as well. Again, I want to mention something that Brian did. Again, we've had numerous conversations. Again, we, we've had numerous conversations in, in dealing with the capacity. Wes has indicated that his interest is, again, throttling it down to the current capacities based on what the SRS owns. We've demonstrated to him and provided him with documentation that if this happens, it's not a viable operation that can continue to stay there. It would have to be shut down or subsidized by the county. Based on that, again, I, I think that, again, you have to look at that capacity and, okay, I'll try and keep going. It would be, again, it would be very harmful if that were to happen, and this was to be shut down, and you'd be back to land application. Land application is something that's going to be very detrimental to the county and to the county residents. I would ask you to reconsider, I'd ask you to look at the other two members that were not nominated. They would be very good advocates for the mediation committee, they both have experience in mediation, and I think it's an important point that has to be taken care of. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, the last card from here in the chambers is for Paul Geisner from Marion Township.
Good evening. My name is Paul Geisner, I live in Marion Township, where I bought my first home about two years ago. Joining it here in Livingston County so far. I graduated from University of Michigan with degrees in electrical engineering, and I work remotely as an electrical engineer. Here before you this evening, advocate for more investment in transportation infrastructure here in Livingston County. Last month, I was without a car for about two weeks, and as I'll acknowledge, on a positive note, I was able to use Letz, which was a great service, and get to a doctor's point, and, you know, get around the county at least a little bit. However, it is definitely limited. Trying to go somewhere on a Sunday and wasn't able to, I don't believe this service, at least when I was trying to book a ride, was not available on, on a Sunday. When it comes to transportation, I think the thing I want to emphasize the most is safety. This is foremost in the minds of engineers like myself, you know, what we do is try to build safe structures, products, et cetera, for, for people, for society. And I think for transportation, this really hits home, because people are going to get where they need to get, one way or another, right? When they really need to, if they don't, can't use a car, this might mean traversing dangerous roads with no sidewalks or shoulders. I know there have been some, you know, tragic accidents in the community. There are so many in the community that would directly benefit from a more robust transportation infrastructure, veterans, seniors, disabled and low, low-income people. So I sincerely request you, you know, consider all the needs of Livingston County residents, good public transit infrastructure is accessible, affordable, safe, and reliable. When you think about the quality of life, access to various activities from sports, entertainment, to food and nature, that's what truly makes for good places to live. On to that end, just listing a few, you know, a lot of work has been done in this area, is my understanding, so, you know, no need to reinvent the wheel here, but the Livingston County Master Plan of 2018 detailed some complete streets concepts around full multimodal transportation options, so walking, biking, driving, public transportation, wider roads with bike lanes. I know Genoa Township is doing some really good things in this space, crossings for major roads, allowing interconnectivity between land uses, so residences, businesses, et cetera. So I think the complete streets concept is a really strong way that we can kind of, you know, improve Livingston County. Livingston County Trails Plan of 2020 also had a bunch of ideas for kind of connecting up more, the more natural spaces of the county. So I'm not going to list out all those, but I think there are a lot of good ones connecting between the Brighton State Recreational Area, along with other, other parks and other trails. So I think those would be really, really good ideas to kind of expand the access there and make Livingston County a place where we all want to, you know, enjoy, enjoy nature as well. Again, I implore the commissioners to implement the recommendations in these two plans to fully address the needs of all Livingston County residents. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
I, I do not have any more cards in the room.
We have anybody on Zoom?
Commissioner, I do have two on Zoom, the first one is Judy Dobbinmeyer.
Miss Dobbinmeyer, you have three minutes.
Yes, good evening, my name is Judy Dobbinmeyer, and I'm from Genoa Township, and I wanted to speak to you tonight about the need for a more well-rounded transportation system within Livingston County. I would especially urge you to expand and continue the expansion of Letz. I have a friend who is blind, and he lives with his elderly mother whom he takes care of, and he is totally dependent on other people to get where he needs to go. He's very reluctant to ask for help, and as a result, he spends a lot of time at home where he can feel very isolated and lonely, and, you know, that can lead to depression. So, without a transportation system that is really robust, that helps him get everywhere he needs, he is pretty dependent on other people, on the generosity of other people who aren't always available. So, the number of people like him are going to increase as our population ages, so I would encourage you to continue expanding Letz, in keeping with your transportation master plan. I'd also encourage the expansion or the following of the 2018 County Master Plan, which lays out the concept of complete streets and notes that Michigan law requires that complete streets be addressed in master plans. Of course, a complete street refers to something that meets the needs of not just people who drive, but people who walk, people who bike, and people who use mass transit. So I hope you will keep that in mind and keep to the spirit of complete streets as you continue to look at the future of Livingston County. We have many people who will continue to need more kinds of transportation rather than just individual cars going forward, and they all deserve to be safe. We've recently had two very serious car bicycle accidents, and we would not like to see any more of those. So I hope you will, as you go forward with your budget planning and your planning for the future, make sure that you adhere to the spirit of complete streets in your master plan and to expansion of Letz in your transportation master plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dobbinmeyer.
And now I have Lisa R.
Lisa, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Commissioners. Although I don't believe it's the government's responsibility to provide transportation for people who have the ability to provide their own transportation or rent vehicles, I do support the government providing transportation for people who are disabled and cannot drive. But the reason why I wanted to speak today was regarding the money that would come to the Health Department that we spoke about last week and that Tim Quinn spoke about. I totally concur with him, and I just wanted to, one of the things that scares me about this money is the vaccination. There was a study that was published in The Lancet a few weeks ago, and within 24 hours was pulled down. And it was a study that looked at autopsies of vaccinated, and the findings of the study were quite scary. The findings were that the most implicit organ system in COVID-19 vaccine-associated death was cardiovascular system, fifty-three percent, followed by hematological system, seventeen percent, respiratory, eight percent, multiple organ system, seven percent. Three or more organ systems were affected in 21 cases. A total of 240 deaths, seventy-three point nine percent were independently adjudicated as directly due to significantly contributed by the COVID-19 vaccine. They said it happened within 14 days of vaccination. I think we, we all know somebody who has died post-vaccination, and I really don't want to see that program funded any longer. I'd like us to do what Naples has done in Florida and actually banned the vaccine and made them illegal. So thank you for your time, and have a great evening.
Thank you, ma'am. Who's next? Hello?
Hello? Oh, nobody, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, you have three minutes.
This is, hi, good evening, Commissioners, this is Alisa Davis, I'm in the city of Brighton, and I would like to also weigh in, as Lisa and Tim did, regarding the Health Department money in direct relation. My particular concern, like Lisa, is with the vaccinations. It's very concerning what's happening. I have immediate, an immediate family member who is having complications due to the vaccine, one of the vaccines. It is now being talked about that they're going to be using this mRNA technology in all of the vaccines, not to mention the mosquitoes that they have flying around now. So, I, I would caution, and I, I would go against this funding only because of what we have seen happen in the past. I just, I mean, y'all know how I feel about this stuff, and I don't have to go into all the intricacies. I just would rather see the government stay, keep their hands off of the COVID money, and that in turn, to me, allows us more freedoms of choice. So, thank you very much for listening to me, I hope you all are well.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
We do not have any more, Commissioner.
Thank you. There'll be another call to the public at the end of the, at this meeting. So, for those of you who haven't gotten here yet, and those of you who are here and didn't think they got everything off their chest, you have another, another opportunity. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the work session of the minutes of July 18th, and the minutes, the meeting minutes from the meeting of July 31st. Chair will entertain a motion to approve. Move Gross. Been moved and
Support Housman.
Supported by Commissioner Housman. Are there any corrections or additions to those minutes? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The next item on the agenda are the tabled items from previous meetings, and I don't believe there have, there are any. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next is reports. Opportunity for our Commissioners to give us reports if they have any. Yes, sir, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I have two. The first one is, I was one of the Commissioners that worked with Veteran Services on getting the 9/11 Never Forget Run off, this will be the first run this year at Fillmore Park, and it's on the 16th of September, so we're going to close registration pretty soon, so I encourage all the residents and all the Commissioners and their families to register. You can go on the Livingston County website, and you'll see the registration there. The second report I have is Commissioner Housman, I sit on POZAC, Parks and Open Spaces, a lot of great things happening there. One of the things, Metro Parks sits on that committee as well, and they're still working diligently to connect all 22 metro parks, so that's something that's coming in the future that I think our residents would like to hear. That's all I have, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner. Are there any other reports? Commissioner Nogegary?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I just wanted to share, I have forwarded each of my colleagues a copy of a legal opinion from Cole Stoker regarding the, whether it's legal or not to create a trust fund for retirement purposes. So I encourage you to take a look at that. I also want to let you know that I have, it's part of that opinion that it was discussion about seeking a attorney, possibly seeking the opinion of the Michigan Attorney General. So I, with respect to that, I have reached out to State Representative Anne Bolen and see if she would be interested in asking for a legal opinion on this issue. We, we do not have the statutory authority to ask for that legal opinion, it has to come from somebody from either the State House or the State Senate. So, anyway, if we want to move forward with seeking a Attorney General opinion, that is something that I think we would need to have a, a vote on whether or not to release the, the opinion from Cole Stoker to provide State Rep Anne Bolen with a little bit of background information. So, anyway, just, if you would look at that legal opinion over the course of the next week or so, and see what, what we want to do. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Are there reports from any other Commissioners? We'll move on then to the resolutions to be considered, and I will turn the meeting over to Commissioner Driddy.
Thank you, Chairman Domas. We're at point twelve on our tonight's agenda. The first resolution for consideration is numbered 2023-08-137. It's a resolution appointing Hillary Spicer as acting financial officer. She's in the county administration and may have a motion.
So move Housman, support Deaton.
Moved by Housman, support by Deaton. Who might be presenting?
Good evening, Commissioners.
Thank you. Ms. Pambush.
Thank you. Thank you. So this is a housekeeping resolution, making Hillary Spicer the acting finance officer, while Cindy Arvinus is acting county administrator during the county administrator search. And Hillary has previously served in this role as the acting finance officer the last time we were recruiting for a county administrator. She now has 13 years' experience at the county in a fiscal position and has a bachelor's in business administration and has done a nice job previously, so looking for your support on this resolution.
Any questions, comments, or observations by any Commissioner? Discussion? Seeing none, I'll close that portion and ask for a voice vote. All those in favor kindly say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm hearing it's nine to zero unanimous.
Thank you.
We're on to twelve, Sub B. It's number 2023-08-138. It's a resolution authorizing the purchase and installation of a replacement vehicle hoist at the transportation complex of Letz. May I get a motion?
So move Deaton, support Smith.
I'm hearing motion by Deaton, support by Smith. Director Kellogg's taking the seat of honor, you may proceed.
Good evening, Commissioners. So, first of all, I just wanted to mention that I appreciate the comments about Letz and public transit from the folks in the audience, and I'm happy to discuss, discuss their comments with them after I'm done with the resolutions here. So if you all want to follow me out the door when, when I'm done, I'm happy to talk about it. We've made, we made a lot of progress over recent years, there's, there's a ways to go, though, including Sunday, as the gentleman mentioned. So, with that, onto the resolution. So, again, this is to replace the 15-year-old hoist at our facility. We went out to bid and would like to award to Allied Equipment. This is, it was not the lowest-cost bid, but it was the most complete and robust, and I think the, the best response out of the two vendors, which I explained on last, on, on Monday last week. I did want to mention a couple other things. After General Government Commissioner Nogegary contacted me with an excellent idea that I had not thought of, so, as I mentioned in the resolution, the, what we proposed or what we asked in the, in the solicitation was, tell us what you'll do to take, take out the old hoist, what is your, what is your offer to remove and retain the old hoist? We, we really just, you know, we wanted it, wanted it out of there, it's old, but still, still useful, still working. From what I've seen online, there is, looking at the National Association for Vehicle Hoists, there is not a set useful life. Lifts can last decades if you take care of them, which we have. Our, our reason for doing this is more so we can lift heavier vehicles and also safer operation for our mechanics. So, what Commissioner Nogegary suggested is donating our current lift to a school that has an automotive program. So what Commissioner Nogegary suggested is donating our current lift to a school that has an automotive program, which I think is a great idea. And the way, after he brought this up, I contacted CoPro just to make sure that if we did find an interested school, that we wouldn't have to rebuild, rebid the whole thing and start over again. So CoPro confirmed that we would not, because the way that both responses were received, they are merely waiving the labor to remove the hoist. So my, my thought is, and CoPro's thought is, we could just tell them that that's not needed anymore if, if we do find a taker. I believe Commissioner Nogegary contacted Heartland Schools and Brighton, who were not interested. I am a Pinckney graduate, so I am going to proceed with contacting someone there. I took auto shop 20 years ago. My, my, my auto shop teacher is no longer there, so I will find out who is in charge. And if, if, if not Pinckney, then possibly someone else in, in or out of county. And I'll take suggestions if you have any. So that was one, one sort of development that happened since the general government meeting. The other issue that was raised by civil counsel is that, is whether, whether civil counsel or our transit attorney is going to draft the contract. And the way I had it written is that civil counsel would, and I would like to proceed with, with having civil counsel do that. Typically, what I really use our transit attorney for is grant contracts, transit-specific grant contracts. For these, for these capital equipment items, I've had, I've gone both ways. I've had our transit attorney do some and civil counsel do some. So given that it's written that way and it's, it's a piece of equipment being installed in a county facility, I would, I would just have civil counsel proceed with drafting the contract if the resolution is approved. So that's, that's about it for me. Again, this is, I'll just mention one other thing. This is a hundred percent grant funded, but it will be able to be used by both Letts and Carpool for, for county fleet vehicles. We do a lot of servicing on sheriff's vehicles, building department, every, every department that has its own fleet. We do brake jobs and oil changes, and this, I do have it in writing from FTA that we can continue that shared use of the lift, even though it's being funded by transportation grants. So that is it. I'm happy to take any questions.
Commissioners, your pleasure. Questions?
Commissioner Domas. Thank you for your resourcefulness. You know, if you, if you, if there's some value to something that we're no longer going to use and we can help one of our other departments, that's a great idea. My thought was, or my question was, is there any, when you, you replaced this because it had outlived its usefulness, I think. Is it to the point where it has a useful life second time? We'd all like to do that. But what happens to this thing when somebody else uses it?
Commissioner, like I mentioned, there's no, I couldn't find any set useful life. And Rotary, who is the manufacturer, doesn't publish a set useful life. It's, it's, it's had a lot less, fewer cycles than, for example, a lift at a dealership that's constantly all day long up and down. Our mechanics don't work weekends, and it's just, it's not as heavily used as a auto, as an auto repair shop, for example. We have it inspected, serviced annually, so it's, it's still in good working order. So I can't tell you exactly how long it would last, but if taken care of, I mean, it's, it's really, it's hydraulics and a lot of, a lot of steel. So there's really not a lot of failure points. There is, you know, electrical lines, hydraulic lines that, that may be replaced if it's reinstalled somewhere else, but I think it could last for another decade or two. That would be my estimation, and that's, that's what I found on the, on the National Hoist Association's website is that they can, they can be, you know, you can draw out the lifespan if you service it correctly, so.
Thank you. Commissioner Gross.
Director Kellogg, I think when we discussed this in general government last week, I mentioned the possibility of of perhaps scrap value that, that would be available for the county. And I would just expand on that a little bit. If you're not able to find a home for it in Pinckney or anyplace else, so with some, some amount of search, please at least take a look at the aspect of, of scrapping it for whatever it might be worth.
Definitely, Commissioner. And I, I think what we would propose, if there's interest, is that the, the school or whoever the taker is would have to pay to remove it, or, or I guess do that themselves. If, if we were to scrap it, I, I think we would be back to having the vendor who was installing the new lift remove it. So I would, I'd probably just get a quote from them on, you know, what, what would they charge, just kind of a à la carte to, to remove it and leave it at our facility. What I was hoping is that the vendors would come back with a bid for not only waiving the labor, but like a credit, but neither one of them did that. So I guess it's not, not that valuable, valuable to them, but definitely we'll consider that if we don't have any takers. Thanks.
Anyone else? Anyone else? Thank you. We'll close discussion. We'll move to a roll call vote. You may proceed.
Commissioner Deaton.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Fiani.
Yes.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Commissioner Housman.
Yes.
Commissioner Domas. Commissioner Sample.
Yes.
Commissioner Nogegary.
Yes.
And Commissioner Drick.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Seated there, we're to resolution 2023-08-139. It's a resolution authorizing the purchase of one replacement van for the Veteran Services Department for fiscal year 2024. May I have a motion?
Move it.
Support Deet.
Moved by Domas, support by Gross. Director Kellogg, you may proceed. You have the floor.
Commissioners, this is a regular vehicle replacement for Veteran Services to replace their 2018 lift-equipped Ford Transit van. The reason this is separate from the, the other replacement vehicles is that these lift-equipped vans can't be leased. So what we did with the current Veterans van and proposing to do here is order from the same state contract that Letts orders its transit vehicles from. Total cost would be 84,000, and the, the estimated operating, operating costs are in the Veteran Services 2024 budget request. Those would be approximately $7,500. Again, a regular scheduled replacement for them. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Commissioners, your pleasure. Questions? I have a quick question.
Sure.
In your fourth, whereas you say the operating costs are estimated to be 7,500 and are included in the 2024 budget request, where's the 84,000 come from?
That is also in their budget request, and I, I explained this a little bit last week without trying to get too far into the weeds. We, so for several other departments, Commissioner, if you recall, the old carpool, the internal, we called it a lease program. It was a capital, capital replacement program. Several of the departments have lease, we call lease holdings or capital replacement holdings that Carpool is, is, is holding in the, in the carpool fund. Veteran Services has about 36,000 from that prior lease program. It's just from sale proceeds of old vehicles and then the, the payments they made on, on their current van. So they have about 36,000 left in, in that fund. And so what they're, what the director would like to do is to apply that towards the purchase price. So out of, out of that 84,173, I believe it's 36,600, we would apply that to the purchase price. And so what is in the 2024 budget is the difference. So 50, 50,000, 55,000 is, is what's budgeted. So Carpool, as, as is usually the case, Carpool will buy the vehicle, and then we'll just charge Veteran Services back for the difference between the purchase price and those holdings that we already have in the carpool fund. I hope that makes sense.
Yes. So you're asking us to decide subpart of the 2024 budget tonight?
Well, you know, and I, I suppose in a way, that's, that's the, traditionally what we've, what we've done with these kinds of things, just because there's a eight, eight to 10-month lead time. I believe that, you know, even, even if, if that particular line wasn't approved, I, I, I think they have funds I'm in their, in their current budget possibly, but I, I'm, I'm not sure if that's.
Talk to me about the lead time now.
About, about eight to 10 months from, from when we ordered.
You may say yes today, but it doesn't happen.
Correct. So that's, that's really, I guess, that, that would be the, the hedge if you don't approve the budget would be to cancel the order, which, which could likely be done. I can't guarantee it, but.
So even if we say yes tonight, it's still eight to 10 months before they get it.
Correct.
And they got to use the 2018 until then.
Correct. Yep.
Does that 2018 get sold, or?
It does. Yeah, we will, we will auction that as we have done with the, with the other county-owned vehicles. Yep.
Thank you. That's all I have.
You're welcome.
How many miles does that vehicle?
It's over 100,000. I don't have the exact count. It's in use every day, so.
Do you have any idea what the trade-in value is?
You know, we believe the last minivan, lift minivan that Letts sold, we, we got about 6,000 out of it. I would not be surprised if that van generated over 10,000 in sale proceeds, just that would be my estimate.
Roughly what's its condition? Would you let your wife drive it?
I would. They'd take good care of it. Yeah.
Does she know you just would say that?
Commissioner, I'm going to say one more thing I mentioned last week, is I just, I just got rid of my 25-year-old Suburban, which I, I maintain wonderfully, and she drove that. So this is, this is a lot newer. So I don't think she'd have a problem with that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further question, comment? Commissioner Nogegary.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The, I'm thinking through the rationale between approving this now versus approving it during the budget process. Can you share your thoughts there? I mean, that?
I mean, the reason is the lead time, Commissioner. If we can always hold off, it's, it's just, it would take that much longer for them to get it. Senator, do you have any comments on that?
No.
No, I mean, I know that we started bringing them in earlier because of the lease vehicles.
Yeah, and with, with the lease vehicles that you're going to see in the, the next resolution or two, those Enterprise places the order now, but they, they can be canceled right up until late, late in the year. We just have to hit the order window with those vehicles. With the state contract, there's no window per se. We, we could hold off. It's just, you know, prefer to, to get it started earlier in the process, but it's, the board's prerogative. So if, if you don't want to order it right away, we can hold off.
What is the, is there a target mileage when we say we better order anyone?
Typically, it's 100,000. The, with the Enterprise leases, it's on a six-year, six-year term. And, and it kept, they often go over 100,000. It sort of depends on the condition. Again, this van is in, the 2018 is in good condition, so I'm not concerned that it's going to break down. So it's just, just looking ahead to the, to the lead time is the only reason that it's coming to you now.
Any further questions, comment, analysis? Seeing none, that part will be closed. We'll go into a roll call vote.
Commissioner Domas.
Yes.
Commissioner Sample.
Yes.
Commissioner Nogegary.
Yes.
Commissioner Drick.
Yes.
Commissioner Deet.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Fiani.
Yes.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
And Commissioner Housman.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We're on to resolution 2023-08-140. It's a resolution authorizing an increase in total authorized vehicles for jail and emergency management in fiscal year 2024. May I have a motion?
Move.
Thank you.
Support Deet.
Moved by Commissioner Housman, supported by Commissioner Deet. Director Kellogg, you have the floor again.
Okay, so this is a request to increase the fleets of jail and emergency management. And, and these are, we would, we would do that by retaining old vehicles, current vehicles, rather than auctioning them. So for jail, the, the justification is that they have some additional prisoner transports. I, my understanding is of some additional jail deputies. I, I believe this would mainly be going between the jail and the court. The vehicle they're requesting to retain is a 2019 Durango that is in pretty good shape. And, and the emergency manager has a, currently has a 2016 Ford Interceptor. That's the, it looks like an Explorer, just so you can visualize it, the SUV, that she has scheduled to be replaced next year. And she would like to retain that for her assistant, so they can both have transportation. Again, both of these are not new vehicles. They're holding on to existing vehicles. So the only, the only costs are maintenance, insurance, fuel, and I provided estimates for those in the resolution. Any questions?
Thank you. Questions, comments, analysis? Commissioner Nogegary.
Yeah, there's a, are more comments and questions. So it is my understanding that, you know, we're in the level two budget process, which means the, all the departments have submitted their, you know, ask for money, that the ask for money is $2 million greater than what the target allegation, allocation was. I think from that standpoint, you know, we're, we're, this resolution is asking for additional cars that we don't have this year. They'll be new for next year. I, I really think that, given the imbalance in the departmental ask, being $2 million higher than what the target allocation was, that we ought to, at a minimum, postpone this. That's just my opinion, so.
Thank you. Further comment, question, analysis? I'll close that part of the discussion and go into a voice vote. All those in favor of the resolution, kindly say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Vote is seven to two. I'm opposed also for the 2024 budget reasoning. We're on to, and that passes then, seven to two. We're at resolution 12E. It's numbered 2023-08-141. It's a resolution authorizing fiscal year 2024 vehicle leases through the county's partnership with Enterprise Fleet Management. Can I get a motion?
Motion, Smith.
Thank you.
Second sample.
Moved by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Sample. Director Kellogg, you have the floor.
Okay, so this one is, all, all except for one of these vehicles are regular replacements, replacements scheduled for 2024. The exception is Central Dispatch, which is requesting an addition, which would be a Ford Explorer. I can, I, I can elaborate on that, on the director's justification, but I just, I want to be a little bit, want to emphasize one point. The prior to resolutions, and I appreciate Commissioner Nogegary's and Commissioner Drick's comments on the budget process. These ones, we, we have to hit an order window, which is coming up next month. If, you know, if there's any, they're, they're not all in September, but they're, especially the, the Tahos, which in the last couple of years, the Tahos have had an extremely short order window, like less than a month. I think last year was actually a week that it was open, and if we don't hit that order window, then we're out of luck. And in terms of patrol vehicles, sheriff's patrol vehicles, we, the Tahoe is the only sure thing. The Charger is, we can no longer order the Charger. It's going electric. And the Durango is available, but it is, we, we had a couple of those canceled the last couple of years. So that, the Tahoe is really the only game in town. Again, the rest of them are regular replacements. I believe the, the F-150 also has a Um, uh, again, the rest of them are regular replacements. I believe the, the F-150 also has a um, September order window. So the reason this is brought at this time, and that's um, the last two years or three years that we've been with Enterprise, it's always been at this time specifically to hit that order window. So again, I, I appreciate the budget concerns. I know we're only at, at the level two budget. Um, but um, like I said before, the, most of these orders can be canceled. Um, e- even up probably till late in the year. Uh, I say that because right now, we still have not received um, the 2023 Tahos that were ordered this time last year, although we do have build dates for early September. So really, up until we have a production date, Enterprise can still cancel the orders. So there's a little, a little bit of leeway built in. I just, uh, there's, I cannot guarantee that we can, you know, in December, after the budget is adopted, that we'll absolutely be able to cancel every last one of these. So there's a, a little bit of that built in um, risk, but uh, on the other hand, Enterprise can usually find a home for vehicles. Um, we've never had to go that route, but the, the way that auto production has been um, with uh, with demand outpacing supply, they, even if we can't cancel an order, they can usually find another um, municipality that, that can, that will take it so that we don't, um, we don't have to pay for it. So um, there's um, that kind of safety fuse built in. So um, if you have any questions on, on the vehicles, I'm happy to answer those. I did go over those last week.
Thank you. Commissioners. Commissioner Domas.
Yeah, there are no cancellation charges if you have to do that?
No, no, no. That's one of the benefits with Enterprise.
Thank you.
Any further commissioner comment, question? Commissioner Nakagiri?
I'm sorry.
Okay.
No, Commissioner.
Commissioner Nakagiri, please.
Uh, thank you. Um, the, um, and the whereas, as it talks about for the uh, Central Dispatch, due to it, we need to increase the fleet uh, from two, going up to three, due to an increase in out-of-county staff training and regional meetings. What, how, how are those? Um, how is transportation for out-of-county staff training and regional meetings handled now?
So the department has two vehicles currently, a um, a, a Explorer that I believe is mostly used by the director, and then a minivan um, that i- is for those types of things. Uh, staff trainings, I can tell you that they do check out carpool rentals from time to time. Um, so that, that is, that is one piece of it. The other uh, justification that I was given is um, servicing towers when communications go down. Um, it sounds like there are um, I think eight towers that they have. So um, that, that would be one of the, uh, just one of the reasons is, is staff trainings. Um, but again, they, they have a, a minivan and carpool vehicles available for that. So I think it's um, primarily these other, uh, other things. Um, the director, deputy director have um, more out of, out of county meetings. And, and then these um, you know, unforeseen uh, repairs on the towers and, and then other emergency situations. So that's, that's the extent of my knowledge.
Okay, um, I, I just commented, uh, I, it's been discussed in the past, but I'll mention it again. With respect to nine-one-one dispatch, the um, revenue growth uh, year over year for, for nine-one-one dispatch comes from uh, an increase in the number of phone lines or phones in Livingston County. It's not a property tax increase. So I've looked at the nine-one-one rate of revenue growth, uh, and it is significantly less than property tax revenue growth. I- in my view, it's, we have a structural problem that is gonna have to be dealt with um, sooner or later. And I think, you know, in, in my um, point of view, this uh, adding of the fleet um, it, it, um, without understanding what we're gonna do structurally for the expenses of nine-one-one, to make sure that they align with the revenues. I, I think it's um, uh, well, I'll be voting against this, so.
Any further comment, analysis, question? Commissioner Deaton.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, Director Kellogg, on the medical, medical examiner, is that a shared cost? Is it just, we provide the vehicle?
Um, I'm sorry.
Medical examiner, uh, Ford Transit.
He, uh, is it a shared cost between?
The other counties or any?
No, it's uh, no, it's uh, just our medical examiner department.
Oh.
General fund.
Okay, thank you.
Could I offer one, uh, just one comment? Um, I, after hearing Commissioner Nakagiri, uh, Mr. Chair, if you don't mind. Um, so the only, the only thing I would say is that with, with these enterprise leases, they, we can get out of them um, without costs. We can um, uh, terminate them early. I've never done that. I don't know all of the details. I would have to do more, more research um, on, you know, is there a uh, you have to give cer- certain notice, or does it have to be, um, you know, can it be in the middle of, of a year, or does it have to wait until the end? I'm not sure about any of those things, but I just wanted to say that, that there, we don't, we're not locked in necessarily for the whole term. So that's all.
Just comment to.
Appreciate.
Uh, you, you indicated that uh, uh, the chargers are electric.
Going electric.
They're going electric.
Yeah, so for 2024, there will be none, uh, no gasoline.
Sorry?
For 2024, there will be no gasoline uh, charger. Uh, pursuit at least. I'm not sure on the retail side.
But we don't have any in the fleet? You've never tested any of your?
Uh, electric, no, and we have not, um, don't have the infrastructure yet for that. There's been uh, I'll, I'll just say not, not a lot of interest from our Sheriff's Department yet on those. I'm not sure if they've um, done any testing. I, I, not that I've heard of. But um, you know, be- before we uh, do that sort of thing, we'd have to be prepared with the charging infrastructure and, and those kinds of things, so.
Thank you. I might have to ask, uh.
Back at the corner?
No.
No.
I'll get to you. Matt, is the medical examiner, the fellow that does the autopsies out of the Lansing Hospital, and the doctor that you share halves with is out of Ann Arbor? They're two different people, right? When it says medical examiner, it's autopsy guy out of Lansing. Okay. Thank you.
EMS, I think.
I have no other questions. Anybody else? Commissioner, no.
No, I saw that Lieutenant raised his hand during the discussion about the.
Nope, I'm good. I, I wanted to make sure that the two medicals were different. Lansing one way and Ann Arbor the other way.
I thought he was gonna comment on the electric. He just did. He shook his head no. So, all right, thank you.
Commissioner Nakagiri, you have more?
Yeah, um, I, um, actually, I am supportive of the fourteen replacement vehicles. I'm not supportive of the the, the addition. So I'm gonna move to amend the resolution just to include the fourteen replacement vehicles. And which is the one you want, uh, cut out? The, so on the um, the, where it says therefore be it resolved, um, it says the carpool, authorize a carpool department to lease fifteen new vehicles, would make that fourteen new vehicles. Then um, striking out the, the text that says including fourteen replacements and one fleet addition.
I understand. Well, commissioners have the same understanding.
I second that motion, amendment, motion to amend.
Commissioner Gross. Uh, so which vehicle of those listed would be one to be deleted?
Cause everything else is replacement vehicles.
Something's on for dispatch. Do they have two, the Tahoe and the Explorer?
The Tahoe is the replacement and the Explorer would be the addition.
Yeah, actually, reading through the resolution, we, we, uh, on the um, second to last, it says be it further resolved. The Livingston County Board of Commissioners authorized an increase in Central Dispatch fleet from two to three, so that, that would, we should scratch that hole. If you, as the amendment to make the amendment consistent would be to strike that second from last, be it further resolved.
Thank you. Does our clerk have an understanding of the amendment? You're seeing a yes, not?
Yes, I do.
Okay, very good. Make sure the record's correct. Any discussion? Commissioner Smith? On the amendment.
If I understood, I wanna make sure that what I heard was what you intended, that, that the Tahoe's in particular have a narrow window in September.
Correct, Commissioner. And I don't know exactly how long that window will be open, um, but the last two years, it's been very short, so.
Thank you.
Miss, Mr. Chair, or, or Commissioner Nakagiri, I do have a question. In the third whereas, um, the third whereas Central Dispatch will increase department fleet from two vehicles to three. Um, would that also, would, would you be amending that whereas as well?
Yeah, I think to, for consistency, um, the um, that language could change, but it's the whereas's don't do anything with regards to the
Okay.
the power of the resolution or the authority of the resolution.
Just requesting for consistency.
Yes.
Okay. And then you would like us to, if this, if this motion to amend it carries, would you like us to um, delete that Ford Explorer from the um, chart?
Yes.
Okay, under Central Dispatch.
Under Central Dispatch.
Okay, just making sure I have that clear.
Any, Commissioner Helsman? Questions? We are retaining something that we're not turning in, so we're not buying fifteenth one. We're only retaining.
That was the previous resolution, Commissioner. This, these um, these are all new, new vehicles. Fourteen of them are new replacements for old vehicles, and then the fifteenth.
So this is a brand new.
Yes, this one, this, that's why those were separate. This would be a brand new lease um, a- as an additional vehicle in their fleet.
Any further, Commissioner Helsman? Any other comments, analysis, questions? We'll close that part on the amendment and we'll move to a voice vote on the amendment that's been uh, moved by Commissioner Nakagiri, seconded by Commissioner Fiani. All those in favor of that amendment to this resolution, kindly say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm hearing two opposed. Do I have that count correct?
Can, can I just seek clarification on the noes? Okay, I'm seeing more, so. I'm showing three noes, um, Commissioner Smith, Commissioner Gross, and Commissioner Helserman. Is that correct?
That's what I believe.
Okay.
But if that's incorrect, speak up now. Okay. We're set. So the amendment has passed. And we're now on to the amended resolution. Any further comment, critique, analysis, or questions? I'll close that portion and move to a voice vote on this one, also on the amended resolution. All those in favor of the amended resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I'm hearing no opposition. So the amended resolution passes nine to zero. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
The twelve uh, sub F on the agenda, it's numbered two oh two three dash oh eight dash one four two. It's a resolution to accept Michigan Department of Health and Human Services funding to support Livingston County Health Department's response to emerging threats for the period October one, two oh two three through September thirty, two oh two four. May I have a motion, please? Support Deaton. It's been moved by Commissioner Helsman, supported by Commissioner Deaton. Director Bolan. Please have a seat. You have the floor. Begin when ready.
All right. Good evening, Commissioners. Um, I was here last month uh, with a very similar resolution to apply for this funding. Um, here this month for acceptance of the funding to be consistent with our, uh, the county's new grant policy. Um, this is funding, reoccurring funding we've had for the last number of years. Um, the emerging threats covers integrated costs in our department. It's not specific to COVID necessarily, but it does cover um, staffing costs uh, within the department, um, including our communicable disease staff, our immunization staff, our Epi staff. Um, I, I wrote my memo talking about um, working in infection prevention control and some of our congregant care settings. That's something that we could not do without this funding. It kinda helps the people in those settings from spreading disease and, and, and being more sick. Um, also helps, Courtney was here earlier, helps some of our health promotion staff too, to do all the good work that they do. So this is really integrated into, it's not just immunizations, it's not just contact tracing, those are the buzzwords within there, but it helps staff without the whole department. Honestly, our COVID response is not what it used to be. We don't do any really specific COVID response at this point. COVID is integrated into, you know, other immunizations and things that we uh, offer the public. Nothing is mandated. Uh, everything's voluntary. If they feel comfortable coming to our department, then going to the pharmacy or their doctor, they can do so. So I've been here several times with this topic, and I'm happy to answer any questions you guys might have.
Thank you. Questions from Commissioners? Fiani, you have the floor.
So it's my understanding that we uh, still have not received the contract uh, for this, this grant. Is that accurate?
The, the contract exists, but it's a shell contract. We work in a state system called EGrams. It, it's a shell of a contract. The language is identical to what you see in your packet from last year. Just the allocations change year to year. We get a target allocation in the summertime. Um, that target allocation's in the resolution. It's seven hundred and some thousand dollars for this year. That number has decreased over the years. I I don't know what's gonna happen next year. I'd expect at some point this, this money dwindles to, to nothing. Um, you know, but at this point, we're able to do some good with it. But um, yeah, so the contract isn't executable until the state does their job and each of these programs and, and funds those programs within the shell of the contract. Um, one of the programs I did not mention is PFAS investigation for groundwater contamination. We do have a site um, in Genoa Township now that we're working uh, with them on to do some investigation, perhaps distribute filters to residents, you know, that are having their wells tested. This contract also funds that sort of support. So um, both this contract and the next resolution are, are constructed very similarly, but this one allows more flexible uh, immediate response from the state to fund health departments that are doing the work locally. Um, so that would be an example of that, so.
Thank you. With, with that being said, um, I think uh, it would be absolutely imperative for the board, not knowing what type of contractual agreement we'll be entering into. Of course, we don't wanna delay funding uh, to the department. I have proposed a amendment that would be, in addition, uh, would be at the end of this resolution. Um, almost, I'd say ninety-five percent of the amendment was actually in a previous resolution. However, that previous resolution was strictly for COVID-19. This amendment would address uh, this resolution. I would also like to propose it for the upcoming resolution. Um, I believe my, the commissioners have had an opportunity to review it or have it. So before I make a motion to amend to add this, I really would like to uh, see if there's any objections. Um, and I'm more than happy to read it out loud, um, whatever my fellow commissioners would like, or I'm happy to dive right into it and make the motion to amend.
Let's start with making sure our clerk has a copy.
If it was what I was provided just prior to the meeting, yes, I do have that, Commissioner.
It is, yes.
Review?
Yes.
Adam Clark and the rest of the commissioners have a pass?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Oh, I, I just provided Commissioner Smith with one.
Thank you. Do all commissioners have a copy?
Would you put them in the boxes?
I handed each of you, you, I think, hand you in one when you came in.
Well, I'll think over your shoulders. That looks strange, like the one I had.
Couple copies.
You gonna read it out loud?
I'm more than happy to.
I think that'd be a good idea.
Absolutely. No, I'm not going to make the motion to amend because I don't want thirty-two different motions to amend the amended motion. So I'm just simply reading it for uh, information purposes.
Thank you.
Be it further resolved, that none of these funds may be used to one vaccinated person zero to eighteen years of age without the. without the express written consent of their parent or guardian in the presence of their parent. Two, institute, assist, advocate or enable countywide vaccine mandates. Three, institute, assist, advocate or enable countywide mask mandates. Four, implement policies with respect to discriminating between vaccinated and unvaccinated persons or a vaccine passport type system. Five, implement policies which cause healthy students to be excluded from school or extracurricular activities. Six, provide persons zero to eighteen years of age with gender altering or elective abortion services. Seven, inhibit efforts to appeal mandates or policies at the county or state level in which activities are challenged as a violation of constitutional rights.
Thank you. I have a question.
Yeah.
It it looks to me as though this is repeating the language of the resolution that was passed two or three years ago. Twenty?
That's correct.
So that
Almost all of it is.
That is the that is your intent to to up to basically copy the language. Or the language has the same intent. So this is not a change of direction. This is only restating what we think we said before, that the Commission said before. This is not this is not reaction to anything that's happening now at the Health Department. We're not.
That that's absolutely correct, what you.
So, okay, so I just wanted to make sure that this is this is in our in our mind, this is not.
Yeah.
In your mind, keep bringing this, you're not thinking of this as a change or as an improvement only in the fact that it's more general and not just for COVID. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so. So we're at the point that it's a motion brought or an amendment brought during the Commission meeting, and I believe by our board rules, if any Commissioner wants five minute recess to reread, think, contemplate, look on their cell phone for things, we could have a five minute recess at this point. Is there any Commissioners that would like that board rule, five minute recess? Okay, I'm hearing none. I think we're at the point that if you want to make a motion, you make it. See if there's a second. Mr. Gross question?
Oh, yes, I I would just like to point out for my colleagues that Commissioner Helsman made reference to the resolution that was passed in September of twenty twenty one. And of the seven items that are proposed here, the first five are virtually identical to what was passed two years ago. And so item six and item seven are new. And I was able to to see this information a little bit earlier today and I voiced a concern with respect to item five and item seven because they in my opinion delve into the area of effect on schools and children in schools. And it's my feeling that we as a board don't have any jurisdiction in those areas. And we encountered an awful lot of difficulty two years ago because of misinterpretation of guidelines by various school employees. And so I I would urge my colleagues to tread very carefully in this area and give very solid consideration to whether or not we want to put this into a resolution. I'm in agreement with most of the the items because they're a replicate of what we did two years ago. And what we did two years ago is still in effect. And I I trust the judgment of our health officer that he knows that we reside in a conservative county. He knows this board is conservative. And I would trust his judgment to recognize situations that may be of concern to us and either come to us or at least act in our best interest. So I I got some concerns on on the proposal. But I guess I'd be willing to go along with with what majority decides. At least I think I would. I'm not sure.
Am I allowed to provide some comment during discussion?
Yeah. I I would ask that, you know, I have a question for Matt if I could at this point. Okay, the the I'll take Commissioner Gross says that the reference to general gender gender alter altering elective or elective abortion services were not in the other one. Do you at this point? Is that a subject that comes up at the Health Department?
No, never.
Okay, so so that would not, that's, you know, that's why I'm kind of saying it's not aimed at anything that's happening now, you know, in my you know, Nick and I have, you know, Commissioner Fiani and I have talked and I said, you know, there's any number of things that we could say. And I don't so you know, I I'm generally in favor, but when we start listing things, if if it's not listed, then are we saying go for it? You know, you understand, you know, and that's, I don't think that's the and and you've shown yourself to have, you know, good judgment in these things, and so there has to be you know, that give and take and that trust between us, but I'd like you, I I guess that was my question. I don't know if you if the Chair would want you to. I think that's a good enough question that he can respond. Go ahead.
Yeah, I I do, you know, to your point, Commissioner Helsman, I I mean, I prefer this not being the resolution, but I mean, it's it's the prerogative of the board. A lot of this is a repeat of what was in a former resolution for a couple of years ago. Reflective of COVID. There is one point in Commissioner Fiani and your amendment here, point number five, which not might not be legal. We do have the authority and and state requirement to restrict children that are unvaccinated for some vaccine preventable diseases that are required in school. Mumps might be one. We have a potential mumps case in the county right now. So there's, you know, the that is a requirement of us, depending on the on the spread and and the and what contact that student may have had with unvaccinated children that are, you know, there are requirements for school age children have certain vaccines and that, you know, there's a waiver that's available, and I think you guys are aware of that. But there is some requirement on our department then to follow through with kids that, you know, may have a disease like mumps to prevent those that are not vaccinated, because if they became infected, they would then infect other children more rapidly, so. I think there's some conflict there. I know legal councils here, they could look into it a little more carefully. I'm pretty sure that's accurate. My my nursing director just texted me that. Let me make sure you point that out. So I would have some heartburn over that one. You know, the rest of them have more or less, you know, except for for number seven. We're all in the resolution previously, so it's really up to the board on on what you would like to do there.
Say correctly that the topics of number six are just not ever discussed at the Health Department.
No, not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
Nope.
Just not there. All right. Commissioner Fiani?
May I address the point that was made regarding item five? And I'm certainly very flexible. I just wanted to note that number five was actually taken from the previous resolution regarding COVID.
Yeah, and if you're going to make this one more broad, you more than COVID, then I would have an issue with it. Related to COVID, I totally understand that. But this is more other vaccine preventable diseases that, you know, are required for school age children to, you know, attend schools, so. It's it's in a different context now.
I would think it'd be more in the context of emergent threats as opposed to current.
That's what the detail gets in with Commissioner Helsman's concern about what you list and what you don't list, so.
My largest concern is we don't, we're going to agree to a contract that we have not seen. So I just want to make sure that the residents of this county are as protected as possible. Actually, to be quite honest, I've never agreed to a contract I haven't seen before, so if we do proceed this even, this will be the first.
But we know, you know, if I understand the the contract, the contract is the contract, it is the amounts that vary as opposed to the coverage. So it's only, I I think the the provisions of a contract are already written out. It's just, you know, is it eight dollars or ten dollars? You know, it's not, you know, does this cover, you know, X child or doesn't? It's more how much money as opposed to a policy change. That's that that's what I understand. The reason why why the the contract and, you know, that's why it says a shell contract. The shell contract doesn't change. The amounts in the shell contract change. That's, am I correct in understanding is.
Yeah, I mean, I I guess I had the option of giving you a contract that said you had no allocations anywhere, or giving you last year's contract as an example. The language is the same. It's just a matter, you can see where we've been funded previously. It's it's the same contract for forty five health departments in the state of Michigan. So some health departments do a lot more different things than we do here in Livingston County. We're pretty limited just on those two programs. PFAS might be a third in that contract. So I provided you what was funded last year as an example, so you you do see the contract language.
Oh, that that's been confirmed.
That it's the same as the shell contract that's in that state system called EGrams I mentioned earlier. It's the same language. When those allocations are put in there and it's ready to execute, we then provide a copy of legal counsel for review. If there are any minor changes, they they notate those at that point. Programmatic changes wouldn't happen. We will, you know, they're they're already known at this point, but if there might be some minor legal words here or there, I I'm not sure, but as far as I'm concerned, it's all it's identical, so.
So on the state end, they're they're locked into it?
Not till they sign it. I mean, nobody's signed it yet.
Oh, okay. Well, that's my, that is my ongoing concern.
But it doesn't get signed till legal counsel reviews it anyway.
Right.
So should any language, if there's any substantial language changes, those will be pointed out and I'll be back before the board. If it's identical language, you know, the resolution allows me to sign electronically if it's approved by the board.
Commissioner Smith?
Thanks, Matt. What remind me again, what's the timing for your acceptance of the approved grant?
The timing is sometime before the state's fiscal year starts, which is October one. You know, just this is a very similar timing to the next resolution we'll be talking about with our mandated programs. We get allocations in the summer. We have, you know, draft contract language and there the allocations are put in that contract and then it's available for signature later in the year. But yeah, the time window is kind of tight. Last year I was here late. I I wanted to wait till I had a full contract for the board because there were some concerns last year. It wasn't signed to the middle of October. The state didn't like that, but I said, too bad. We're, I I want to make sure you guys all had that information last year and it it hasn't changed this year, so.
Thank you.
Commissioner Nakagiri?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment on a couple of things with respect to item five. That's the talking about, well, implement policies which cause healthy students to be excluded from school and extracurricular activities. That word excluded has a a precise meaning, legal meaning. Excluded is something the schools can do to a student. You are excluded from coming to school. It's not a a term that applies to the Health Department. With respect to being excluded, that was a point of contention, you know, in my recollection where the in the past, the Health Department was, I'll say for lack of a better term, enabling was an enabler for bad school policy of excluding healthy students from school. For example, if a student was within whatever it was, three feet or six feet from a COVID positive person, and even though they had no symptoms, even though they they weren't sick, they had to not come to school. That was a decision of the the schools, but you know, in my view, in my recollection of history, you know, the Health Department helped enable that. I I wouldn't want to see the Health Department be able to enable that, what I'm going to call bad behavior. And that's on item number five. With regards to item number six, that wasn't in there before, and as we talked about, it's not happening now. But I've seen many times, and perhaps you guys have seen, that we have to be forward looking and and who knows what's going to happen two, three, four years now when the progressives, you know, keep pushing these things, then maybe we will see some of these things. I would just as soon get ahead of it and and have the and have the language of item six in there. I would also say that the language, because it's included in this, it's a budget amendment, it only applies to this budget amendment, and and at some time or another, we might want to have a policy resolution that so we don't have to go and hash this out on every budget, that we could have a more comprehensive discussion and just have, I'll just say boilerplate, but until we get that, you know, this is a language to amend a budget resolution. The budget resolution is only enforced, you know, for the next budget year and then it expires, so.
So if that's the case, is our former resolution that we did, was that a budget related?
Yes.
Okay, so that, so it 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 could have been interpreted as just for this money. Just for that money at that. So what you're proposing that we would do a more general?
At some time, not tonight.
A more general policy. You know, so we don't have to do it every year and update it every year. That's that's what you're suggesting.
Yes.
Yeah. Commissioner Fiani?
I do want to address the example made pertaining to vaccinations. By this resolution, or I should say this proposed amendment to the resolution, it would strictly pertain to these funds, this fund. So if you did want to, for example, implement a policy that caused a healthy, a healthy unvaccinated student, let's see, a healthy student to be excluded from school extracurricular activities. I mean, in theory, you you could still do that. You just couldn't use these funds to do that. Based upon this proposed amendment.
So it's just sort of difficult. I have I have staff funded ten different ways. Some of it from this funding, some are from other funding. What part of that person can't do this? That's my quandary, and I guess how would you know? I mean, so that's sort of my quandary.
So it's, for example, two hundred thirteen thousand for immunizations. So that wouldn't apply to this. Five hundred thousand for communicable disease contract tracing, investigation, testing, infection prevention. So maybe you would not use this pool money for excluding healthy students from school and extracurricular activities.
I'm still not quite following because I mean, that that five hundred thousand dollars is spread between probably ten different employees in the department from from that source. Now, each, you know, they do hundreds of activities during the day, so we don't code time to specific activities to the granular point that you're trying to make to that, you know, to excluding children, I suppose, if that's your point.
I'm just trying to provide you with an example of how this still could be intact. And again, this is only a proposal, but I'm just trying to buy the board with that opportunity. You could still maintain your policy in your department without this being removed. Of course, if the board is not in favor of it, it's not an issue either.
Mr. Chair? Is there is there language that that we could put in this number five, but exclude healthy people? Is there a way to say it that, you know, say a person gets measles or mumps or whatever? And you know, they're not, they're not vaccinated for that. So that is spreading around the school and so see, would not the school make that decision as a? see, would not the school make that decision as opposed to your health department? Or will you be involved in that? And so my question is, is there a way that we can do this so that we're not talking? You know, because last time it was COVID specific and that was a whole different subject than mumps and measles and scarlet fever and, and those sort of things that, you know, I think, you know, we generally have, uh, all society, I think, agrees on those sort of things. But how COVID was treated, the society didn't agree on, you know, there was differences of opinion on how that, well, that really helped to exclude healthy people at that time. For some people it made sense and other people didn't make any sense at all. And so is there, is there wording? You know, that, that we can do what we understand and, and does anybody have a suggestion on proper wording that Matt doesn't get heartburn over? And, you know, because he wants to talk about measles, you know, we think it's okay if he, he does it for measles. But the way this is said is, uh, would prevent him from making a measles decision.
Commissioner Smith.
Yeah, I think, I think we're, we're, we're trying to decide how to make mashed potatoes here and we all want mashed potatoes. But I think it's a well-intended amendment. Uh, but I would recommend, uh, a motion that we table this till the next board meeting, uh, just for one board meeting to allow, uh, the verbiage we're looking for to be hashed out uh, between Matt, Commissioner Fiani and anyone else who wants to input.
If my reading of, uh, Robert Schulze's order and our board rules, I think a motion to table now takes precedence and we should vote on that.
If you give a second.
I'll second it.
Thank you. My notes now.
Who, who is the second?
Helsner.
And it was a motion to table this resolution, twenty twenty-three oh eight one four two, correct?
For one meeting.
For one meeting.
For the purpose of getting agreeable language. Be two weeks from today. Still within reason with the state of Michigan because it's not October.
It'd be fine. Yep.
All those, a voice vote will be used for the, uh, motion to table. All those in favor of tabling for one meeting, essentially two weeks, please say aye. Any opposed? Resolution is tabled and Matt and Fiani are now tasked with, potentially rewording five. Item five.
I'm happy to do that. I actually kind of would have preferred more board input, but that's the route the board wishes.
I, the votes taken, resolutions tabled. We haven't, we haven't decided how many people are going to work on this, but by the resolution, provide the amendment. I kind of just did. I thought we'd keep it simple. Unless people want to volunteer.
I, wait a minute. Our council, our council probably would have input also.
Nothing, nothing.
I would just say as a point of order, we, we voted, it's tabled and we should move on to the next one.
Accept that. Thank you. We're on to item twelve G. Make a note here, tabled. And Madam Clerk, are you satisfied knowing what we did with twelve F?
Yes, because there was never a formal motion to amend, so I am all set. It's, it's been tabled till the next meeting.
That's correct. We're at twelve G. Uh, it's number two oh two three dash oh eight dash one four three. It's a resolution to authorize an agreement for the delivery of comprehensive health services grant for the period October one to twenty-three through September thirty-two twenty-four. May I get a motion? So moved gross. Moved by Commissioner Gross, promoted by Commissioner Helserman. Director Bowlen, you're still there?
I'm still here. I haven't left. Um, sometimes I wonder, um, so this resolution is our mandated services for the department. These are things we've been doing forever. The state partially reimburses our expenses in those programs. They're listed in the table in the resolution. Really nothing of note there. Uh, in my memo, I believe I stated that, you know, the state voted on additional twenty-five million dollars to local public health departments. Um, in, in the governor's budget going forward, the state still has not figured out what that allocation looks like, uh, for us. So likely we'll see us, an amendment increasing this amount during the state's fiscal year. I don't know what that number's going to be, but this is the number we have now. So I will entertain any questions.
Um, commissioners. Commissioner Deaton.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, Director Boeing, on the eagle drinking water and on-site wastewater management, you hear any rumblings of any increases there with all the PFAS? And some things discussed earlier to help us out?
No, not, you know, the increase would be in the grant we just tabled. Um, that, that was where we, that's the mechanism to increase funding when we get emerging environmental sorts of things. PFAS would be a good example of that. In fact, I think we'll see that amended, um, soon. That's just routine permitting for onsite, uh, septic systems and drinking water wells. That's, you know, what we do day in and day out with our environmental health division. Um, so that's the support, you know, the state has amended to support us fifty percent of our costs to run that program. We're kind of act as agents of the state to run that program locally. Um, and, you know, the other fifty percent is covered through permit fees, so.
Okay, but nothing helped you know a township out at all that we're hearing?
No, that'd be nice. There's not direct funding for the township. And in that circumstance, I know there's a lot of frustration from a number of different angles there, but, um, unfortunately not, no.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Further questions, comments? Commissioner Gross.
Uh, thank you. Um, Matt, on the, uh, in the listing of the project titles, one, two, three, the fourth item is CSHCS vaccine initiative. I interpret that as being the Children's Special Healthcare Services. Has that been there historically?
Yeah, that's been, that's just to provide greater access for those children with special needs to, to get vaccines should they want them. Um, we've also used some of that money this year to create a, a sensory room for children that have, um, you know, some sensory issues where, you know, bright lights might affect them or, um, just the tone of the room, the, the colors you use. We're able to use some of that to, to help out those clients, so. Yep.
The other, Christian. Any other commissioner?
Discussion is now closed then. I'm seeing we have a roll call vote necessary for, uh, item one four three on the agenda.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Commissioner Helserman.
Yes.
Commissioner Domas.
Yes.
Commissioner Sample.
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Commissioner Drick.
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Fiani.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you. We're at twelve H on the agenda. It's number two oh two three dash oh eight dash one four four. It's a resolution to certify officer and employee delegates to the twenty twenty-three municipal employees retirement system annual retirement conference. May I get a motion?
Mo- motion to approve the resolution.
Support. Motion by Fiani, support by Domas. Thank you. Jennifer, I think you're still on Zoom.
I am, I am. Um, so each year MERS hosts an educational conference. This year it is in Detroit in late September. Uh, MERS bylaws allow delegates and this year, as in prior years, nominations were sought from our employees. Um, and after a hundred fifty-seven votes were counted, the top employee delegates are Diane Gregor from IT and Jordan Brown from HR. Also being approved on this resolution are officer delegates Kristin Dennison and Barton Moss from Fiscal Services. So happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Questions or comments from commissioners? Seeing none, we'll move into voice vote on one four four. All those in favor kindly say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nine to zero unanimous. Thank you, Jen.
Thank you.
We're up now to twelve, uh, sub I. It's two oh two three dash oh eight dash one four five. It's a resolution authorizing the process for filling the vacancy of the county administrator position. May I get a motion?
Motion Deaton.
Thank you. Moved by Deaton, support by Helserman. Who might be presenting?
I think the board chair.
I am here. I'm happy, I'm happy to start it off. Yep. And so this resolution provides the framework for the county administrator search. The, uh, Hiring Solutions, Todd Serline, provided a lot of detail at last Monday night's Personnel Committee. Uh, we are using them per board resolution, per prior board resolution, um, as part of the, the recruiting process. The job has been posted, uh, posted as of two weeks ago and, uh, July thirty-first, and we are already receiving nominations. Uh, I should say applications. Um, this resolution establishes the search team um, as the Personnel Committee, as well as the voting members, as well as non-voting members of myself, the, uh, Cindy Arbanis, who will be the acting county administrator, who is not seeking, um, seeking that position permanently, as well as a volunteer elected official. Uh, the, the resolution also would put forth the top three candidates for county administrator before the full Board of Commissioners, so that the full Board of Commissioners will be the deciding, uh, the deciding vote. So that's, I'm happy to entertain any questions, Cindy, or anybody else. If I missed anything, please, uh, please jump in.
Thank you.
Commissioner Gross.
Uh, Jennifer, um, I think last week in personnel, uh, it was noted that, our clerk, Ms. Huntley, has, uh, indicated she would not like to be part of this process. Has any, have any of the other electives, uh, thrown their name in the hat to help us out as yet?
Yeah, so I understand that there was some discussion among the elected officials and that Jennifer Nash was the, the elected official who was sort of picked by, by electives to serve on that search committee.
That is correct.
Great.
She was voluntold. No.
I've received, I've received a message from, uh, a, uh, a copy of an email from Legal and I'd like to ask the attorney present whether you'd like to go through that with us.
That, that no longer applied. That, that was clear, that was clarified previously. The question was whether the contract.
Sorry to interrupt, but we cannot hear on Zoom what's being said.
That had been clarified.
That had previously been clarified. That's no longer an issue. As, as, uh, HR Director pointed out, there, what, we were not aware that there was a prior resolution authorizing the contract with Hiring Solutions. And given that resolution, that issue isn't.
Thank you. Thank you. Cleared up. Any further comment, clarification, objection?
I would, uh, make a motion, we have amended to change the words, a volunteer elected official to Jennifer Nash, a county treasurer.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Helserman, second by Nakagiri to strike the words and a volunteer elected official from first, therefore, that on my copy is, uh, shaded. And substitute, uh, the name of Jennifer Nash Treasurer, but retaining the rest of the paragraph. With that as the understanding, any quick comment or opposition?
I met with, uh, our treasurer, Ms. Nash. She was, uh, I wouldn't say flattered to be selected, but, uh, she agreed with our selection and this will be the first time in my memory that we had one of our elected people on that committee. We did? Where was it last time? Okay.
Drink Commissioner John Care was involved when, um, Administrator Hinton was hired and then I was involved.
He's willing to admit to that, I guess.
I think he is. And, um, I was involved as a non-voting member when Administrator Bird was hired.
Okay. Well, Ms. Nash is, is an ideal selection, so.
So we'll proceed to a voice vote on the amendment to add the name of Jennifer Nash. All those in favor kindly say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So the amendment is taken care of and now we'll go through to the full resolution as amended. I, yes, we'll do voice for your voice vote also. Uh, all those in favor of the amended resolution kindly say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we have a unanimous amended resolution fulfilling the vacancy. We're on to two oh two three dash oh eight dash one four six. It's a resolution appointing board representatives for court mandated mediation. Case number two three dash three one eight six four dash C K. Brought to us by the Board of Commissioners. Can I get a motion?
So moved Sample. Support Smith.
Again, we have the double S's supporting Sample and Smith. Uh, any, uh, analysis questions beyond what you can read in the resolution? Comment, objection? I'll close that portion and go to a voice vote for the final resolution of the night. All those in favor kindly say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Who opposed? It's nine to zero. We're at, uh, item thirteen, accounts payable reports. A sub A is claims dated August fourteen, twenty twenty-three, and sub B is payables dated July twenty-two through August four, twenty twenty-three.
We're in both payables and claims, A and B. Smith.
Thank you. Moved by Smith, support by Helserman. All those in favor kindly say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Crickets on the opposed, nine to zero. We're on to the call to the public, item number fourteen. This is a two-minute, uh, call if you happen to want to talk to us. Is there anybody with a card?
I do have a card from Paul Geisner from Marion Township.
Thank you. Mr. Geisner, you have two minutes with fifteen seconds left. This man will hold up a placard and fire it at you if you go over.
I'll keep it very short, so I don't think, hopefully that won't be necessary. Um, just wanted to say there were a few comments on the other public, call to the public around uh, COVID and the vaccinations. And I wasn't here for the whole, you know, resolution that was discussed, so I'm not going to weigh in on the specifics of that. I just wanted to make a couple of comments around, um, you know, there have been six hundred and seventy-two million doses of the COVID nineteen vaccine given in the United States. Six hundred and seventy-two million. I mean, if there was, um, you know, serious issues or response, um, to that, I think we, we would, it would be very well known. I'm not going to try to rehash like any specific studies or anything like that. Um, not in the business of doing that. But I, I think they're broadly safe and effective. Um, and, uh, just wanted to make that known. And, uh, of course, COVID itself did or has killed, um, one point one three million people. So, um, I personally know a lot of people that did pass away from COVID. I don't know anybody that did pass away or had any serious issues with the vaccine. So I'll leave it at that, but, uh, thank you for your time.
Any further? Any person in the room that's decided right now they want to talk? I see no hands up. I see no hands up. Call the public? Yes. You're certainly available. Go ahead.
So I just wanted to share with my colleagues and the public that I don't hold any hard feelings towards anybody who would have preferred me not to be part of the mediation team. And that's, uh, you know, my goal is to, to reach a mediated settlement so we can move beyond where we're at, so we don't have to pay a bunch of legal fees. And, and I, my opinion, I thought we were close before. Um, and, uh, so I'm optimistic that we can, uh, reach a mediated, um, agreement. And like I said, I, I, I hold no ill will toward people that have a different point of view than myself. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe so too. We'll proceed to Zoom.
I have one on Zoom. It's Lisa R.
Lisa R. on Zoom.
Lisa Rose Martovich from Hamburg Township. Um, I just wanted to follow up with the, um, Health Department Resolution. Thank you for cabling that. Um, I just want to, I guess what concerns me is that um, Mr. Bowling had said he would have done nothing differently than he did in 2020, and that was what's concerning to me. Um, Health Department makes the recommendations to the schools and I'm just, um, want to please keep that in mind in terms of children that are unvaccinated for other, um, issues, um, other childhood diseases, that we were really concerned about that. We have our border closed because there are millions of people that have come over that border who are, who are unvaccinated for everything that we've eradicated in this country. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further people on Zoom? Now that it's your opportunity to press the raise your hand button. Seeing none, we will close the call to the public and go to item number fifteen. Can I have a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Support Deaton.
All in favor, kindly say aye. Any opposed? Leave. We're here.